Yes, hello, my name is William Montgomery and I am a Fort Collins native. And my brother and I have been racketeered by this city, both in now three unrelated rule and camping. So, I have to start off by saying this: your camping ban racket is over. Just now, recently, in the Fort Collins Caller article about the jail population, you have actually now officially admitted that it's not about the sleeping, it's about all the other stuff that comes with it. So there's two things that I have noticed with that. One, all the other stuff that comes with it, you illegally obtained through identification to find all that information out. And most of them are actually, as I've talked to people on the streets, other camping tickets that they basically had in other jurisdictions where they, through persecution, left. So, the other half is that basically no amount of special agency tribunals is going to make up for my lost sleep when I'm interrupted, when I have nowhere else to go, and I'm told that I have to go to the shelter where I'm going to be ticketed. The shelter is a private institution, it's got health issues, it's not the opportune place for some people to sleep, and this is my own hometown. So, if you want to continue ticketing people for camping just so that you can find out that they have warrants, you're going to occasionally come across people like me where you don't have any other warrants out, and now you have human trafficked me and moved my brother and I from place to place to place. And last night, we were actually told to leave our own hometown now because we can't afford to pay a three unrelated rule racketed rent. So, that's that right there. On another topic, same topic, this was last night, you guys arrested two people and ticketed us separately thinking that we weren't part of that. This was a violation of free speech. They were actually protesting their right to be in a park overnight to sleep! So yes, that's exactly what you guys literally interested them for. And the best part is, is that after nine days of not saying anything, you guys tried to play good cop, bad cop, and you said to them on the streets, this was Officer Rogers, he came over one night, "Hey, what you guys are doing is illegal, but we're exercising discretion." I chimed in, I said, "Hey man, if you're not going to ticket them, stop harassing them, go away, leave." And he went immediately, all of his goonies left immediately. Then they came back 16 hours later, after I believe one of you guys had also shown up at the scene, basically starting getting tickets now. Camping tickets, because we had complained that we got a camping ticket and they didn't. But the next day, it wasn't camping tickets anymore, it was park violation tickets. The funny thing there is that the articles that were posted in the Coloradoan specifically stated that officers had told them that they can move to the side of the sidewalk, that that was not part of the park, and that nobody would get violations there. Well guess what? We all got violations there. And to top it all off, Jason Pull has already, basically in his most recent article, still reporting that that's not park property, because it's statistics fraud, because you guys don't want to admit that you started ticketing us for places where you told us we could be. So I need a definitive answer from you guys, because I haven't reached it anywhere. Is this easement park property? Is the grass next to the easement park property? And if so, why are your reporters contradicting them? And, I guess, wow, I have a lot of time. Okay, so I've been following this for a while now. Statistics fraud. You guys claim that it's working for your three unrelated rule. Last time around, you claimed the whole Mulberry Court or things like that, and then someone chimed in and said, "Oh, well, you know, I highly doubt that any other solution would work as well." Well, two things right there. One, when you say "highly doubt" any other solution would work, that's statistics fraud, you're not letting that statistics play out. And two, of course it's working. It's working for you guys. It's working for your houses and your quiet neighborhoods at the expense of unrelated people. And now we see all these affordable housing approvals for, guess what? Families. Every single time I saw a new development, it said, "Who's it for?" Families. Families, families. What are you doing about all the unrelated people? Sending them to other towns so they can get racketed by more three unrelated rules and camping tickets? You're all federally indicted.
Thank you, next.
Hello, my name is David Montgomery, brother of William. I'm here to discuss on similar subjects. The first is basically the separation between homeless and transients. You don't have an actual real legal federal right to actually determine who really is a homeless or a transient. Technically, a transient still deserves the right to integrate into a new town. With that, I've noticed the Coloradoan has been posting about the Occupy Jefferson Park, nothing but lies and defamation. With that, we've talked to the Coloradoan, and they're not posting our information. With that leads me to another very, very concerning issue. The cops obviously discriminate against us, take away our credibility, whatever you want to call it. As of two nights ago, I called 911 to report a suicidal man high on drugs ripping up a roof of a building across the Jefferson Park. I obviously am awake a lot, and I saw it. Cops didn't respond till 7:20 in the morning. I thought they were showing up for my dispatch calling 911, they were actually showing up for them. Once it heated down, I pulled the cop aside and he said he was going to look into it. He never did, he didn't even believe me. That guy was found hanging out of a skylight bleeding. So for all intents and purposes, the Fort Collins Police Department should be held liable for the damages on that roof, and also that man should press police misconduct and potentially attempted murder charges for not believing me. With that, the protest was recently been ticketed, we've been witness the last six nights where the cops showed up two times, even with the drone once, for sleeping, and they weren't even ticketing the people across the street. They were just getting after us for protesting the very thing that you guys are wanting to keep on the books of the sustainable living. Something really, 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 really needs to happen here, because that was the saddest day in Fort Collins history last night, when I saw my friends arrested for their right to protest and sleep. And so, you claim them as transients in the Coloradoan, and in fact, they're actually locals. One was born in Loveland. And we don't have any other criminal records, and so just like William was saying, you guys are claiming that you're not jailing people because of sleep, that's wrong. And I'm going to protest that by occupying Jefferson Park as a innocent, clean citizen of this community for the last 26 years. Also, I find it not coincidental, this may sound a little farfetched, but nine days go by in the protest, and obviously you want to look good as a city to allow free speech. Well, once the car owner posted their, what they wanted to get out, in the dark after the weekend, it was violent, it was bad. And right before it, one of you city council members showed up in that park 16 hours before my friend was beaten up by police. This discrimination has to stop. The politics of it against us is understandable, but the fact when they didn't take a phone call, when I was reporting something very serious, Fort Collins needs to be federally indicted. What if I called in a rape? Police not going to show up, murder, nothing? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, next.
Thank you. Next.